Thursday, October 24th, 2024, Myhamsburg City Schools School Board Meeting. Stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The district's mission is to foster a positive, nurturing, and safe environment to inspire and support ongoing learning and the development of individuals as productive members of society. We understand that our community is diverse, and we respect and appreciate the opinions of all of our community members. At the same time, we must be able to conduct our meetings in an orderly fashion. Our expectation at all board meetings is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. In the event anyone is disruptive and interferes with a meeting, they will be asked to leave. If they do not, we will request that law enforcement assist in the process. Roll call, please. Mr. Amsler?
Here.
Mr. Dapler?
Here.
Mrs. Gettler?
Here.
Mr. Maury?
Here.
And Mrs. Neese?
Here.
And we have our students, Ms. McGowan, Ms. Ogobor, Mr. Prince, and Ms. Dr. Nattin. Not present. Administration Dr. Blessing is also not present. Mrs. Hillard, present. Mr. Hulman?
Here.
Before we adopt the agenda, I just wanted to explain why our board reps aren't here tonight. Andrew Prince and Sophia Stocker are being inducted into the National Honor Society tonight. And I would imagine Madison, McGowan, and the associate Ogobor are there tonight as well. So I did want to say, before we get started, I wanted to say something about Andrew, though. He's actually a student stakeholder in our strategic plan sense of belonging, sense of safety and belonging group. And we had a meeting last night, and he's very involved. He shared how the Character Strong program that's been implemented at the high school during their flex period, and he just expressed that he found great value in it. The lesson that he talked about was one about bullying. And some of the concepts were, how do you define it? How do you present and respond, prevent and respond to it? And understand the impact of it? The staff and the other stakeholders really enjoyed hearing his perspective of how this program is beneficial to students. So I thought I would mention that. Our board reps are highly involved in a lot of different things. All right. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
A motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. First by Mr. Maury, second by Mrs. Gettler. And then next, we have the waiving of the reading of the minutes, recommended action, the approval of waiving the reading of the following minutes as presented. The regular board meeting held on Thursday, September 26th, 2024. Our special board meeting work session held on Thursday, October 3rd, 2024. Our special board meeting work session held on Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024. All right. And then next, we have the recommended action and approval of minutes for regular board meeting held on September 19th, 2024, and special board meeting work session held on October 3rd, 2024, and special board meeting work session held on October 22nd, 2024. And then F, we have the recommended action approval of financial report, September 30th, 2024. Next G, we have recognition of staff and students. And we're going to start out first with our district student of the month, Olivia Polly from Myhamsburg Middle School. Do you have one up? Yeah.
The Myhamsburg School September Student of the Month is Myhamsburg Middle School 8th Grading Olivia Polly. Olivia was nominated by Team 9 teachers and counselor Monique Hobbs. Ms. Hobbs said, "The Myhamsburg School September District Student of the Month is Myhamsburg Middle School student Olivia Polly." Olivia was nominated by our team of teachers and counselor Monique Hobbs. Ms. Hobbs said that the middle school is proud to nominate 8th grader Olivia Polly as a September Building Student of the Month. She demonstrates respect, responsibility, and safety, and embraces the values of our building-wide PBS program. Olivia is very accepting of others and treats both her peers and adults with respect and kindness. She is quick to offer a smile, polite words, and a heartfelt thank you to show appreciation. When others are talking, she is attentive listener and helps the speaker feel heard and valued. Olivia exhibits exemplary behavior and effort in the classroom. She is in her seat and checks the daily agenda so that she is prepared and ready to start when the bell rings. She waits for directions, listens to the teachers, and follows all directions. She has a positive attitude, never complains, and always puts forth excellent effort. She takes responsibility for completing her schoolwork and earns high grades. Her teacher considers Olivia gifted in art and would love to see her continue to develop those skills throughout her scholastic career. She especially enjoys drawing and working with clay to create 3D art. She hopes to become a coffee barista when she grows up and occasionally enjoys a dark chocolate cocoa. Olivia is an all-around great person, and she is a true pleasure to have in class. She is very worthy of this recognition. Way to go, Olivia. Her personal strengths and positive impact on the school community make her a model student and deserving of this recognition. So congratulations.
So Olivia, a couple of things for you. Here's a medallion for you. It's like a necklace. You're in such good off. And then we have a Viking t-shirt for you as well, so. Congratulations, and thank you for always being that role model for others. So did you bring any special people with you this evening?
Yeah, my grandma and my mom.
You're a nice daughter. Thank you very much. And then, do any school people with you here?
Um, yeah.
We brought Mrs. Thomas with you and Mrs. Lieber.
She didn't know I was coming. I just dropped it.
It's a surprise.
Yeah.
Well, I think she's very happy that you're here, so. Olivia, congratulations. Ready to come over here and get your picture with everyone, okay?
All right.
How about Mom and Grandma come up, too?
Right, congratulations. Next, we want to recognize National School Psychology Week. It is recommended that the Board of Education recognize National School Psychology Week, November 11th through the 15th, 2024. This year's theme, Spark Discovery, recognizes the work that school psychologists do to help their communities seek out new ideas, affect change, and expand horizons for children and youth. Join us by taking this week to embark on a journey of discovery, explore how each person can celebrate the work of school psychologists, and learn how school psychologists help students, families, and communities every day. And then next, we have a resolution of appreciation for a retiree, and she's already been given her certificate. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the resolution of appreciation for the following employee. Kathy Dobbie has rendered 28 years' service to the Myhamsburg City Schools. And whereas Kathy Dobbie's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement, and whereas Kathy Dobbie has distinguished herself as a substitute nutrition services employee and satellite manager, now therefore be resolved that the Myhamsburg City School Boards of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education. So congratulations to Kathy. All right. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve meeting openings A through H. Do you have a motion? I know. Yeah, I know. I messed up. Yeah. So. Okay, just leave it here then. Yeah.
I want to do whatever's most convenient for everybody else and make it proper, whatever that is.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. All right. Next, we have roll call. Roll call, thank you. We're going to go with a move by Maury and a second by Gettler from previous. Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler? Yes. Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
And Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
And do you want me to highlight the financial memo or are we good there? Oh, yes. Please talk about that. Yes. All right. So just to go back for everyone else and kind of capture some highlights on the financials, I'd just like to make a few memo highlights just so everyone can understand what all of those reports actually mean. In all of your reports attached, you're going to see that the district revenues outweigh the district expenses by a surplus of $900,000 for the month of August. I'm sorry, for the month of September. We did receive a tax settlement that contributed to the revenue surplus. So the district is still general fund only in the black waiver, $7.5 million. Just a little bit in our office, the fiscal office has started the audit for the previous year, so that's 7/1/23 through 6/30 of '24. So everyone in the office in the district is working on getting those GAAP documents turned in. The regular end-of-year audit has started, so the auditors are here this week working with everyone. Basically, overall, we're still functioning. Next month, we need to have master plan presentation as well as the forecasts that would need to be approved. So when we have the results of the audit, how long does that take? Does it take a year? That's going to take a while, yeah, because they just started this week. So we're doing GAAP audits. We have to do some Medicaid. We have to do the regular end-of-year audit. And then Plattenburg is kind of stepping in and preparing the documents for all of that, so it'll be a little while. It's a long process. Thank you. All right. Next, we have public comment. Each person who wishes to address the board shall complete this form prior to the beginning of the meeting. Commenters will give his/her name and address. Each person is allotted three minutes to speak. The first 15 minutes only of public participation will be allotted for public comments concerning agenda items. An additional 15 minutes for discussion of other topics will provide a total time of 30 minutes for public comments. We will give a 30-second warning so speakers know when their three minutes is up. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consistent with our policy, this is not a time to question individual board members or district employees. As a reminder, our expectation tonight is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. We will not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing statements. And we do have one green sheet, and that's Shelby Nunnery. So we come up and state your name and address.
My name is Shelby Nunnery, and I live on Decker Court in Myhamsburg. I'm here today to express some concerns about the Lifewise Academy and to strongly recommend that the board consider rescinding our religious release time policy. While this may seem like a bold request, the evidence supporting it is substantial and concerning. My concerns center on several critical areas: safety and vetting. The recent incident at a different school district in Perrysville where a Lifewise director with a surrendered teaching license due to inappropriate student contact was hired highlights the inadequacy of their vetting process. Our district requires rigorous background checks for all staff and volunteers. Why will we accept less from an organization removing children from school grounds during instructional time? Lifewise poses potential liability for off-site incidences based on the waivers that Lifewise requires. There is no direct district oversight of staff hiring and screening, facility safety standards, emergency procedures, transportation safety, or student supervision protocols. There's a lack of transparent safety measures. There's no regular safety audits, limited parent access to safety protocols, unclear incident reporting procedures, and no direct communication chain with the district. Another major concern is Lifewise's systematic approach to peer-to-peer evangelism. They explicitly encourage and reward students for recruiting their classmates, creating a problematic dynamic where children become marketing tools for religious recruitment. They offer candy prizes and parties to students who successfully bring in their friends. Will we accept this kind of recruitment strategy from any other organization targeting elementary school children? Their own social media posts and materials proudly showcase their intentions to use peer pressure as a conversation, a conversion tool. One parent quoted in the Dayton Daily News revealed this strategy plainly. "It's always been a goal of mine to bring her friends to church with us, and this is our way of flipping that on its head and taking the church to the kids," end quote. "This isn't religious accommodation. It's a calculated strategy to bypass parents and use our schools as a missionary field." Let's be clear, Myhamsburg is not legally obligated to maintain a religious release time policy. While such programs are permitted, under Ohio law, they are not mandatory. Many districts have chosen not to adopt these policies due to their complex issues. While Lifewise presents itself as a non-denominational, their curriculum comes from the Southern Baptist Convention's Publishing Arm Lifeway. If we permit this program, we must be prepared to equally accommodate all religious instruction requests, including those from Hindu, Muslim, Buddhists, and even Satanists. I commend Myhamsburg's recent efforts to foster inclusive environment. However, Lifewise's presence directly undermines this work by creating visible religious divisions and encouraging student-to-student religious pressure. I respectfully recommend that the board consider rescinding the religious release time policy entirely. And the fact that Lifewise declined to choice schools offered to operate after-school hours reveals their true priority. It's not about providing religious education but about assessing a captive audience of children during school hours for recruitment purposes. As a community member invested in Myhamsburg's success, I ask you to protect our students from being used as recruitment tools and to preserve a learning environment where all students feel safe and included regardless of their religious beliefs. Thank you. Thank you.
What's so funny?
His reaction. I was like purposely watching, like, and the screen went black. I was like, oh my god.
Made me jump a little bit, too. All right. Next, we'll go to our consent agenda. Oh, I also have some handouts. Can I pass those out to you? They're just info sheets about what I was talking about. I know I didn't get to everything, so I wanted to have some. Sure. Approval of overnight extended student trip. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve a following overnight extended student trip. The varsity cross-country postseason tournament, Obeds, Ohio. Chris Adur, Matt Gilbert, Emily Hamlin, Rufero, Blue Lax, Singh, Holiday. And then B, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following out-of-state travel and overnight student trips, the same tournament, and the same people. Chris Adur, Matt Gilbert, Emily Hamlin, and Rufero, Blue Lax, Singh, Holiday. And then C, approval, recognition of organization club. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following organization club, the Myhamsburg High School Chess Club. Approval of tuition, D, approval of tuition-free senior enrollment. It is recommended by the superintendent and high school principal that the Board of Education approve multi-all move last slot for tuition-free enrollment for his senior year. Per board policy J E C B and compliance with state law and board policy, non-resident students are exempt from paying tuition when the student is under the age of 22 and his or her parents move from the district following the commencement of classes during the student's senior year for the remainder of the school year and for one additional semester. Tuition-free senior enrollment does not extend to out-of-state. And E, approval of preschool promise memorandum of understanding. It is recommended by the superintendent and elementary curriculum director, Amy Dobson, to approve the attached preschool promise memorandum of understanding. Next, we have F, approval of recognition of National Bus Safety Week, October 21st through the 25th. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following. Just the National School Bus Safety Week, and the theme is Driving Safely Into the Future. And G, approval of proclamation, National Red Ribbon Celebration, October 2024. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following proclamation. Mr. Dapler's going to read that for us.
Whereas, public awareness is the key to effectively preventing drug abuse and to educating Ohio's youth about the dangers of alcohol, tobacco, and drug abuse. And whereas, preventing substance abuse within communities requires cooperation from workplace, family, schools, and faith communities. And whereas, this year's Red Ribbon Celebration theme, Life is a Movie Filmed Drug-Free, is a reminder that everyday Americans across the country make significant daily contributions to their communities by being the best they can be because they live drug-free. And whereas, Drug-Free Action Alliance urges Ohioans to wear red ribbons, sign up for Drug-Free Ohio, and make a commitment to a healthy lifestyle. And whereas, business, media, social services, government, schools, service organizations, religious institutes, safety forces, and individuals will demonstrate their commitment to a drug-free lifestyle by wearing and displaying red ribbons during the week-long celebration. Therefore, the Myhamsburg City School District does hereby declare October 23rd through October 31st as Red Ribbon Celebration Week. We hereby encourage all citizens to participate in alcohol, tobacco, and other drug education and all related prevention activities, thus making it a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle.
Thank you, Mr. Dapler. H, we have approval of Class of 2025 Early Graduates. Michael Black, principal of Myhamsburg High School, has recommended Hector Cana Morales and Ariana Peters for early graduation pending satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. And I, we have approval of a resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution as presented. And Mr. Hulman will talk about that once we get through this. Part of our board meeting. And then J, we have another approval of our resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution as presented. And then K, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve consent items A through J. Mr. Hulman?
I'll start at the top. A and B, those are typical. Anytime there's travel, overnight stay. C, organization of the money to start the chess club, so that's, they always have to get that board approved to start a program. Tuition. Yeah, they do.
That's awesome.
I might have to actually push up, and it's been a long time.
Yeah.
So yeah, they actually have a nice group, so.
Good.
Good for them.
Sabotage you with your phone, Warren.
They probably will. I know. Then the tuition-free senior enrollment, that's part of our board policy when they start their senior year to finish out their high school career here. The preschool promise is one that we do each year, and when parents enroll in kindergarten helps them gather data to find out. That's very beneficial to us to find out where they live, where the preschool opportunity is available for them, and also help to get them resources if there's other kids in the family coming up that would be coming up for kindergarten. So the University of Dayton's been a very good partner within that. They've really led the charge to really help make sure that kids have some exposure to school and socialization prior to kindergarten. School Bus Safety Week, big shout-out to our bus drivers. They do a fantastic job, and as a plug, we're always looking for bus drivers, so if anyone's interested, we will take you up on that. Red Ribbon Week. What's going on this week? And the elementarys have different days, they're doing different things this week, so it's been a nice way to promote that. Early graduates, it's a regular item on the board agenda. First resolution, that's a resolution I presented to you to unemployment with one of our employees, basically for top abandonment. And then the second resolution is the resolution in which the board heard this suspension appeal the other evening and is upholding that decision. So that's what that resolution is.
I just wanted to add something about the preschool promise data. That was it. I don't know if it's been three years ago or four years ago. We use that data to determine how many kids in our district did not have access to preschool. And our administrators wrote grants and worked for preschool promise and Head Start to implement those programs. Free, did not cost our district anything. Preschool promise and could no longer participate, so they applied for a grant through Ohio Department of Education, and we received that money, so we're still able to have those preschools in addition to our Maddox Lane preschool at Medlar View and Bear. So it is very good information that we were able to use to get our students prepared for kindergarten. Next, we have our human resource. Roll call, please. Oh, motion, please. Yeah.
I move that we approve consent items A through J.
Second.
So first by Mrs. Gettler. And is that you, Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Any questions, concerns? All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Gettler? Yes. Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Next, we move to our human resources agenda items. It is recommended that the, A, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the Myhamsburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with Ohio Revice Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. Do you have a motion?
I move for the approval of the personnel report certificated and classified.
I second that.
First by Mr. Amsler, second by Mr. Maury. Mr. Hulman?
Business as usual, regular monthly.
Roll call, please. Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Mr. Ansler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Next we have B, approval of personnel report certificated, classified, supplemental stipend. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report, certificated, classified, supplemental stipend. And then that same language about, um, the B C I I and F B I criminal record check. Do I have a motion?
I move for the following, uh, personnel reports, certificated, classified, supplemental stipend.
Second. So first by Mr. Daffler, and second by Mrs. Gettner. Mr. Hummer?
Regular business.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ansler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Next we move to agreements and contracts. A is the approval of agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center. The superintendent and treasurer CFO recommend approval of the attached agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center for collaborative coaching, occupational therapy, and physical therapy services for the 24, 25 school year. B, approval of addition to the district insurance policy with Hoskin Olin Insurance Solutions, the local agent Masters Insurance. The superintendent assistant, superintendent recommend, recommend approval of an addition act of workplace violence and stalking threat to the district insurance policy with Hoskin Olin Insurance Solutions, the local agent Masters Insurance. C is the approval of memorandum of understanding between the Meimsburg City School District and the Meimsburg Police Department. The superintendent and treasurer CFO recommend that the Board of Education approve the attached memorandum of understanding between the Meimsburg City School District and the Meimsburg Police Department. And D, we have the awarding of contract renewal with Woodhall LLC. It is recommended by the superintendent, treasurer, CFO, and Director of Business to enter into a five-year, 60-month renewal agreement with Woodhall to provide district multifunctional devices and services. And then E, approval of agreements and contract items A through D. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve agreements and contract items A through D. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of agreements and contracts, uh, A Alpha through D Delta.
I second that.
All right, so first by Mr. Ansler, and the second by Mr. Mallory. Mr. Hummer?
Katrina, do you want to talk about this Warren County one? Or do you need to just touch base about it, the Dayton Christian? Okay. So we are, uh, just as we're the fiscal agent for, Bishop Bible, we're also the fiscal agent for Warren County. So therefore, they're choosing to, um, spend their own similar dollars providing services, getting them to the Warren County Agency. So that's why you have to approve there.
It's a pass though.
Yeah, the dogs away just comes to us and.
Yeah. Um, approval of the district insurance, the addition that the workplace violence and stalking, that's one, um, when we approved, with Masters in June, that was one that we wanted to take a little more look at. And after more investigation, talking with other districts, it's, it's, um, pretty much a no-brainer, um, $4,000 or $5,000 premium for a year. Heaven forbid we have need to do, but if there would be a shooting in the building, we'd need to be totally reconstructed. Very sad, funeral services, all those things, that was all covered for, for that amount. So, um, that's why we're kind of bringing that to you this evening to, to get that added to our policy for that. And then C, the approval of the memorandum of understanding with Meimsburg Police Department and, um, for the SRO. Actually, we have our SRO here tonight this evening, Brian Copsy. So this is, um, a new five-year agreement, um, to enter in with them. This is the same one that we approved at Mears, the one, um, that we did with the township. It's kind of nice to have them on the, on the same cycle now. And then our contract, uh, with Woodhall, we do have Woodhall here this evening. I'd like them to kind of talk and present to the board. We've talked a lot about it. Um, our contract with them is up in March. So this would be an earlier renewal to do, very much like we talked about when we looked at Ronkey, in terms that this is a product that does not have to go out to bid for that. We're going to do some research on our own of, um, as you know, I'm part of the, the business associations with all the different schools in Montgomery County. And so, um, copiers, it's always a little, a conversation that we have in terms of that. And so, knowing that it was up, I kind of put the feelers out there with water about where people were with those, um, knowing what our staff opinion was and our relationship with Woodhall. Just the relationship they have with the technicians. We've been over with them for 20-some years in terms of that and the renewal rates, um, that we were able to get with that. So just talking, uh, with others, kind of testing the water out there of where people are at, um, is anyone switching? You know, here's some people maybe that have reached out. What are your thoughts, things like that? So we kind of, it goes about to it that way. We have been extremely pleased with Woodhall. They came to us and asked us to renew early. Censure information, the, the things that are on there. But I did ask them to come this evening, um, to talk to the board and to show that relationship and why it's important and why, um, our staff here value that relationship with them and being able to save some money, um, as well. So, Suzie, you want to bring your, your team up? And you can use the, the mic over here on the side here. So Suzie Woodhull, actually the president, um, of Woodhall, so.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for, uh, having us here tonight. Uh, Woodhall LLC is a local company, and we're located just down the road in Springborough. And, um, we have 80 employees, of which six live in Miami'sburg, including the technician who services, um, most of Miami'sburg City Schools. And his son goes to the preschool, uh, program, uh, in the district. But we are honored to have partnered with Miami'sburg City Schools for some time now. And, um, we're, again, locally, we're, we're here, we're, um, onsite almost daily. And, uh, we value the relationship. And I'm here to commit to you, the school district, that, um, Woodhall will live up to all of our commitments and hopefully beyond that, because we value this relationship so much.
Thank you for your time. My name is Tim Dresch, I'm the vice president. Suzie is the president and owner of Woodhall. And with us is Brian Lay, the R K 312 specialist that's worked with the district for probably 15 years. Why we're here is to answer any questions you may have on the agreement. We did come forward and try to pull the contract up to do a cost savings. There's a lot of things involved in it. It was over a six-month project of going to each of the facilities, making sure we did our due diligence, working with I T. There is software that runs on all the equipment as well. So your badges, probably your card rooms interact with the equipment, and the maintenance is on that as well. I wanted to give you a little background. Some people, when we say copiers, I think it's just to walk up, lay the docking on it. They're much more complex now. They're scanning to your backend files. They're faxing, they're sending documents throughout the network. But some of the other school districts in the area, and I think this is important, is that we're a trusted partner to not only you guys, but to also about 45 other districts next to you. What that means is we've got the service personnel, we've got the software specialists, and we've also got emergency, um, situations where if you have a machine go down, we're 12 minutes away. We have inventory of all parts and all toners right across the street. And those do come up periodically in some of the districts. We work with Franklin Schools, Wayne, or Waynesville, Kettering, Oakwood, Brookville, Beaver Creek, Eaton, Middletown, Monroe, Northmont, Northridge, Troy, Tickwa, Twin Valley, Fairborn, Montgomery County E S C, Green County E S C, Miami County E S C, Graham Local Schools, Cedar Cliff, Clinton Massey, Covington Miami, Milton Union, as well as the Greater Dayton School. So we just want to let you know that we work with a lot of your peers in other districts. And so we come forward with the recommendation, the cost savings. We have done our due diligence. And we just wanted to come tonight, if there's any questions about the agreement, we're here to help you. Thank you.
I just have one, what, why was it renewed early?
The, the contract ends in March. Typically, when the contracts start ending, we start looking at it.
So that way it's not a last-minute decision?
No. We look at about six months ahead of time, so.
Well, thank you, I, I read it, and there's a lot there.
There is.
And he carries a lot of load for our school district, and that's one of the loads that he carries. So the support, having deep support behind him is really important. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you for your time. You know, the other thing is, as we look at this, um, we look to our administrative assistants within the building who run those, and they are very, um, they, they will tell you when you like something and when they don't like something. And.
Right, explain that.
And, 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 and pretty much when they start hearing that, you know, we're looking to copy your stuff, they're, they're pretty darn vocal of. This is what, we like our service rep, we like this. It's very seamless in terms of that. Our technology, um, weighed in on this as well, in terms of unanimous in terms of that, so. Like I said, just having that conversation with other business managers in the area, what they feel what their experiences have been, you know, and we're pretty blunt of, you know, has anyone had issues with Woodhall? You know? As you can tell by the list, you know, there's, there's a lot around that that trusts them to do that. So, to, the, the relationship is very important in terms of that.
Thank you.
You mentioned at the beginning, there wasn't a reason to send out for bids.
Yeah, this is one that does not have to be sent out for bid. And sometimes too, it's, when, sometimes when you start pricing out and, and going out for bid, when you know that you have that relationship and the numbers are coming back of what you're looking like, knowing what they've done for us in the past, you know? I don't, I can't ever remember them ever charging for overages or anything like that. Just that it's, you don't want to go out and advertise something when you've kind of sat and looked at it, you have that relationship, because then that's not good to kind of not keep good hope, does that make sense, you know, in terms of that, so?
And because it involves technology, I'm assuming that Andy's involved in a lot of this.
Andy and Mark, Andy and Mark have been involved or stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm good.
Any other questions? Roll call please. Mr. Ansler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner? Yes. Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
And Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
All right, next we'll move to our financial agenda items. Authorization for amendment to the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources. It is recommended by the treasurer CFO that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. B, approval of purchase orders and then and now invoices. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following purchase orders and then and now invoices as presented. University of Dayton Bishop Libel, $48,960 auxiliary funds. C, outstanding checks. The treasurer recommends the Board of Education approve the list of outstanding checks to be voided. And D, approval of financial items A through C. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve financial items A through C. Can I have a motion, please?
I move for the approval of financial items A through C.
Second. First by, um, Mr. Daffler, and a second by Mrs. Gettner. And, um, Mr. Ansler?
Yep. Items A and B are procedural. Under item B, you are going to have a Bishop Libel P O, which is for professional technical services, which is the textbooks. They are using auxiliary funds, but even though they're not directly listed on the list of above $25,000, so we should policy. And then item C is to void out checks that are over a year old. So these are checks that have been issued, and they're just been sitting out in our account for some well over a year at this point. And so we're going to avoid those out, and that puts those funds back into our balance. If there ever were one of those recipients that needed to be reissued that check, we would cross that path at that time. But those checks wouldn't cash right off for them at this point anyways. So we're going to avoid those out, take them off our books.
Any questions?
Is the University of Dayton Bishop Libel in B? Is that, are we getting serving as a pass through conduit for those funds?
401 is auxiliary funds, yes.
Okay, so we're just facilitating the transaction between the two of them?
Yes, but since it's over that threshold, I'm still going to put it to our policy. So that's why you're seeing it.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call please.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner? Yes. Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
And Mr. Ansler?
Yes.
Now we have acceptance of donations. We received $6,600 from the Meimsburg Band Booster Association for the Meimsburg Marching Band Staff Stipends. $14,000 from the Meimsburg High School Alumni Association to the Meimsburg School District. Five iPads valued at $1,045 from the Meimsburg List Lodge to the Medlar View Primary School M V classes. That's the multiple disability classes. Books and materials valued at $2,884 from the Mark Twain Primary School P T A to the Mark Twain Primary School Library. Books and materials valued at $1,542 from the Mound Intermediate School P T A to the Mound Intermediate School Library. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the donations.
Second.
So, uh, first by Mrs. Gettner, and a second by Mr. Ansler. Any comments or questions?
Thanks for all the donations.
Yeah.
I do have a question, that marching band stipends, that's to pay staff, uh, that are not normally employed by the district. This is just pay them, this is through the band?
Yeah, so what happens within the teacher's negotiated agreement? There's a set amount of, um, coaches that are covered by the, the negotiated agreement. These are ones that are not covered. And we do this similar to sometimes with football and basketball, things like that. Where the boosters. And so we accept it as a donation, since they're technically our employee slash volunteer. So then we pay them through our payroll.
Anything else? Any roll call please?
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ansler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
And next we go to reports, and Mrs. Williams, you're here right on time.
That was like perfectly timed.
That's what they're for.
Yeah, we're going to freeze right there.
So, um, I have to say, I was excited that I was at the C T C meeting this month because one of the Meimsburg students was a guest who was, oh yeah, super impressive.
There was a young lady that represents, that came from Miami'sburg, and she is in their fire and EMS program. And they've taken all these life skills training and everything like that in their program. She is a junior there. And her father started choking at dinner, and she did the Heimlich and saved his life. And it was just, and she was just so calm and cool and collected, talking about this. She came and she talked about her program, and she said, and my instructor's voice was in my head and, you know, walking me through it, just stay calm. And it's, it was just amazing. She was just very impressive. Her name is Kirsten Formchell. And when she graduates from there, she wants to go on to Sinclair and become an EMS or paramedic and things. So it was just really nice to get to meet her and listen to her story and everything. So I do have, um, the write-up that they did about her that I wanted to turn into, you guys could see it and share it. Because I just thought she was amazingly, um, put together for an adult. I was like, huh, I'd be in the corner and going, somebody help him. So she, she really was amazing. The other exciting thing is that M V C T C has received a five-star rating. The other exciting thing is that MBCTC has received a five-star rating from the state. They had five stars on four of their programs, which are graduation rate, career, and post-secondary readiness, and post-program outcomes. They met nine out of nine of their federal indicators. So they got one of the highest reports in Ohio for CTC. So for our students to get to go to a program is excellent. I think it's a great opportunity for them. I do have a link here in my notes, if anybody wants to look at that and, and go through and see what their ratings specify and everything. It's, it's a pretty easy link. It's www.mvctc.com backslash news backslash article backslash twenty-three eighty. So they, they list all of their articles. And it was really well done, and specifying what they did really well with. And the end of the quarter was October eighth, so the year was just whipping by, it seems like. They are, another thing that they're doing, they are hosting a special lecture, and anybody from the Myamisburg School Board, or anybody else would like to go, it sounds very intriguing. I'm gonna, if I can get out of babysitting for the morning, I might go. There is a Holocaust survivor named Mr. Ira Segowitz, who on Monday, November eleventh, is going to be speaking to the seniors from eight forty to nine forty-five a.m. in the multipurpose activity center out there. And he's speaking as a Korean veteran, a Korean conflict veteran, as well as a survivor of the Holocaust. And he was in one of the camps as a child and everything. So they say he's an amazing man to get to listen to. So that's a really cool opportunity, if anybody wants to join that. You're welcome to do that. And I have Becky, oh, Butterhane Plismid, I think is how you say it. She is the secretary for Miami, the ICTC, and you can contact her and say you would like to come, just so that you have enough chairs out. That is a really cool thing. And then the other thing I wanted to turn out to everybody was, they're honoring their veterans by giving free services from the cosmetology department. So if there's a veteran in the area, they can get a free haircut, a manicure, a facial, pedicure style. And I think it's a great way for the students.
A two court.
We're gonna, we're gonna send you up there.
Think it is Elston.
Yeah, sure. But it's a great way for the students to interact with veterans and just hear their stories and thank them.
Cool.
So it is just a really, I thought that was a very amazing thing for them to do. So I do have those two attachments with me. The balance in the general fund is sixty-three million, four oh nine, three forty-five, ninety-three. So they are doing well. They're actually, their revenues are over their expenses for the first, for this part of the year, so, you know, across your fingers, it turns out well. But everything seems to be humming along really well out there. And they're gonna start doing tours for the students. I'm hoping, you know, like right after Christmas, I hope to join one of those tours, so I get the full soup to nuts on the whole facility, because it's huge. It takes almost all day, so.
For middle school kids?
Yes, yeah.
Kids go there and pay for.
My son came home today, and he got to sign up for his tour.
Did he?
Yeah.
I'm so excited.
He's excited.
I think I'm as excited as they are. I don't know, I'll be the biggest kid there, but it's, it's cool.
It is amazing.
It is truly amazing what they can do and what they have at their fingertips. I don't think I put it in the notes, because I didn't have who it goes to, but an airplane was donated to MBCTC. And they have put it together and taken it apart several times, and used it as much as they could. So they are actually donating it to another school that doesn't have anything like that, so that they can use that. I don't like you're donating a plane to somebody else. That's pretty amazing, so. But they get all sorts of wonky things donated to them, either old equipment, or cars, vehicles, tractors, sometimes livestock and everything. And it's nice that they share with other facilities, so. I will keep you abreast if anything else exciting comes up, but that being my report for this month. Any questions?
We're actually working with them right now. We're in the process of filling in mechanic.
Ooh.
And so we've been reaching out to them, and they're gonna send us a couple applicants out. One is actually a Myamisburg student that graduated several years ago that. So it's, we reach out to them on a lot of different things. They are a very, very good partnership, and, you know, like you said, encourage when they have those open classes to go out.
Yeah.
The, I don't truly believe people understand all that offers, the CTC there.
And how far they can, they can come out earning a very decent living and, and have steps to go for the next level, that there are employers lining up to get some of these skills. So they're trying to add more in the HVAC scene and in the welding and things like that, because there's such a need, so. But, you know, it's a brand new facility, just, you know, just have the groundbreaking in May, and they're already to capacity, because it's going so fast. So I, I think there's gonna be some expansions coming in the next couple of years, but it'll take a while to catch their bite.
I think our numbers will also increase as we've, bringing eighth graders out there to, for them to understand, okay.
It's gonna be.
Really getting those wheels turning of what, what opportunities are out there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's exciting.
Molly, are you going to that, uh, gentleman, that legislature?
Are, um, do we have school on your honor?
Well, why I'm asking is, I believe that's the week of our OSBA conference, that we are gonna be in Columbus, and I just didn't know if you were gonna go and.
I had not signed up for that, because it is Christmas at the shop, and that's a hard week for me to be gone. So I talked to the treasurer, and I was like, is there another one at another time that I could go and, because I'd really like to go, and he told me what classes and things to sign up for, but I just didn't want to do it in November. That'd be a hard hit for me with Christmas and the holidays.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, anytime you get to.
But isn't there one?
Hear about history in that regard.
Yeah, so I'm trying, I'm gonna try and go to see him speak, because I think that would just be amazing.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Well, hopefully, you know, we do have a lot of community members that watch the board meetings, so.
Oh, yeah, and if anybody wants to go, I think that they would be tickled to have you, because he is, I think he goes yearly there, and they just say he's an amazing man to talk to, so. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Molly. Next we have our legislative liaison, Mr. Mallory.
So the legislators, not active at the moment, there's not much to report, but I had a couple of comments. First, to follow up on Molly's, my niece with the VCT, MBCTC, yeah, that's a lot of them. But when my sister first told me that she enrolled in there, she enrolled in her veterinary program. And it kind of raised my eyebrows, I was like, I just can't see her doing that. But now, she's in her first year at the University of Finley. She's doing great. And the pictures that we've been getting of her anatomical dissections are, it's surprising to see the little girl that you remember, you know, just being young, going to Disney, actually doing those kinds of things, but she was very well prepared, so you're doing a great job. I guess it was on September, when was our report card meeting? What date was that? Was that the twenty-second?
No, that was October third.
October third. So on October third, when we were meeting the report card, one of the things that was discussed as something that maybe we could have some help with the legislature problem was gaps in our district in student funding when compared to other districts that we're with similarly. And I reached out to our elected officials, Representative Creach and Representative Young, who had told me that there was a lot of information that came through the ESC in a funding program they had hosted. Did you attend that, by chance, on behalf of our district? Or no?
What now?
Was there a conference about student funding at the ESC recently?
There was, not that I have ever been invited to. We attended with the representatives from the state in regard to requesting our questions and concerns for funding.
Did you?
Yes, I attended that.
Okay. Was there any input from them on things that we could do, or things that we could advocate for, that would help close those gaps?
What they did was ask us our concerns, for them to voice for us how to help us close those gaps, and what, what we could do, and what help we needed, and what were our concerns across the board on funding, so that they could speak for us. So it was, it was sort of a superintendent's and treasurer's came together to say, these are what's, these are what are the concerns happening in our districts that we need to look at.
When I reached out to them, the response was a lot of slides with funding data on them. If I sent them to you, would you mind, like, helping explain to me what they mean next month, just?
Yeah, it's probably the funding formulas and all of the.
It's complex. There's a lot of information on a piece of paper that unless you're trained in your skill set, it's impossible to really understand.
Yeah.
What it is, but that's really all I had.
All right, thank you. Next we have our student achievement liaison, Mr. Ansler.
Well, along with our student of the month, which is for September, Ms. Olivia Polly, we also have from Bauer, or Bauer Primary School, Lincoln James, Bear Primary School, Finley Carmack, Jane Chance Intermediate School, Brylee McCluskey, Kinder Intermediate School, Savannah Co., Maddox Lane is Zach Christensen, Mark Twain Primary School, Alex Murts, Matherview Primary School, Margaret Hess, and Mound Intermediate School is Cannon Harper, and Myamisburg High School is Daisy Fisher. So congratulations to our September students of the month, and especially Ms. Hobbs, or not Ms. Hobbs, Ms. Polly. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ansler. Next we have our Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition liaison, Nyla Hatter.
We, we did not have a meeting this month, but we will be meeting on November twenty-first, and I'll bring a report after that time.
All right, thank you. Then, next we have our district news and information from Mr. Dappler.
The latest making a difference on our tree are Maddox Lane preschool speech pathologists, Jenna Greiner, and Myamisburg Middle School intervention tutors, Autumn Cox and Renee Culbertson. Jenna was nominated by our colleagues, Marissa Hatton, Alyssa Bowling, and Kelsey Stockdale. Autumn and Renee were nominated by Glenda Mesta and Shannon Williamson. All these wonderful honorees were recognized for always going above and beyond with the students at Maddox Lane and Myamisburg Middle School.
Thank you. Next we'll go to our roundtable comments. We're gonna start with you, Mr. Hellman.
Sure. Couple things here. Congratulations to Kathy Dobbie for retirement. Kathy's been a member of our district for, for many years, and I think saying she was there with a few years at Mark Twain, wasn't she?
Quite a few.
Yeah. So congratulations to Kathy. Also, congratulations to all of our, we have a lot of senior nights that are finishing up this week coming up. This week is gonna be a senior night for football cheerleaders, vanguard. I think, I think we have one more after that. So congratulations to, to all of those seniors, that some of them are wrapping up their, their final sports for that. As I was gonna say, Ryan, is he a Ryan? Copsy, congratulations on your five-year contract with you. But the reason I wanted to bring Ryan to the fore, Ryan is a very important part of our district crisis safety team. And so what I wanted to bring up is that we are in the process now, we are required to run three in live, active crisis drills with our students every year, and so we are in the process of that. And so Ryan is a very integral part of that. Addison Gates is a very important part of that. And so if your, if your students come home, your kids come home, like, well, we did this drill today, and then a couple weeks later, like, well, we did this drill today. There are so many that we have to do pre-year, and we always like to get this wrapped up before winter break, and get that done before all the testing comes in after the spring. So, Ryan, thank you for all your help with that, and we told him with the new five-year contract, we wanted to make sure his name was in that, that, you know, he's the SRO, so, you know. And then, last thing, as a reminder, this weekend, vanguard, they're hosting a Midstates competition. It'll be, it should be a gorgeous weekend, they have over twenty-five bands coming from Kentucky, Indiana, and Ohio, so. I know sometimes the board always wants to know when that comes up each year, but it is this weekend, so. But that's all I have.
What time does that start, Mr. Hellman?
Hmm, I think about noon now.
And that's at Holland Field?
It's at Holland Field.
I just wanted to remind the board that, well, thanks, Mr. Copsy, and thanks for retiring Kathy Dobbie. I do want to remind the board that Mr. Ansler needs to speak to us after the meeting for a few minutes, right?
About ninety seconds.
Okay. And then I just wanted to let our board members and community know that our student board reps will resume roundtable meetings with other student board reps from other districts, and they usually work on some sort of legislation, so it's a great learning experience for our board reps. And I really wanted to thank our bus drivers, they're charged with a lot of responsibility and patience. They see their students twice a day, so they, you know, form these relationships. And I know one of the bus drivers recently, who was a former student of mine, he, he's great at lifting up people, he, that family had a fire, and four of those kids, four out of the five kids rode his bus. And he donated, he won't let me say his name, but he donated two hundred dollars towels and blankets to that family. So, you know, I just really appreciate that our bus drivers and former graduates and community members just continue to lift our district up. Also, thanks to our school psychologists, who are with families, students, and staffs, to identify the learning and behavior needs that students might have. They, they test students, they collaborate with the staff, with the parents, and they're often, you know, comfort and support for families as they go through these issues that a child may have. So they're very appreciated in our district. And I just also wanted to say happy birthday to Dr. Blessing, who cannot be here tonight.
Nothing fancy in the finance office, except for the regular normal day fun, but I do vote that we turn the boilers on for November, because my hands are froze.
It'll be cold by then, so.
So, there's that. And a big thank you to all the staff that are driving mess this week, as I tell them, I need this, I need this, I need this, it's for the audit, it's because the auditors, everyone's been great, it's a process, so. Sometimes that's hard to do when you're the treasurer that came in, and you're digging through everyone else's stuff, because it wasn't exactly your year, so it's hard to figure out sometimes, but we're getting through it.
Just want to say, it sounds like, feels like it was a pretty good first nine weeks. Just came off of fall break, and I'm gonna give a shout out to the eighth grade boys' football team again, because they beat Springbourn twice.
I know.
Last week, and ended the season very well, and that was great. Looking forward to winter sports kicking off, and.
They're putting the pressure on for tomorrow night, you realize that?
Yeah, I know. It'll be good, hopefully, we can get a victory. And thanks to all the work that everybody does in the entire district. Thank you.
To be brief, I too wanted to thank our bus drivers. I know it's not just a local problem, it's a mission problem of getting bus drivers, and those that we do have do an excellent job, whether it be the summer, winter, spring, getting our kids to and from field trips to school each and every day, with the amount of construction that is in Myamisburg at times, and the detours, and they do a remarkable job. So all credit goes to them. And then I wanted to thank Shelby, you talk pretty fast, I couldn't write, so I'm appreciative that you gave us the heading out. So thank you for sharing your comments, and definitely for the handouts, so thank you.
I'd like to say congratulations to Olivia, what an honor to be named district student of the month, that's, that's a big deal. And I would also like to thank all the professional bus drivers who safely transport our students each and every day. What a big responsibility, and I appreciate them so much. And then best wishes to Kathy as she starts a new adventure in her, her life. That's it.
She has her list going already.
I did, she has. I did, she has it.
Again, the donations are always impressive, and being a Moose member myself, one of the women of the Moose wanted me to make it known that the women of the Moose, they're made it two iPads, and the men, they're made it three, so. So there, there was a dual effort there across the entire lodge to make sure that those got to you guys, so. Again, pass on best wishes to all the seniors in our senior nights, and it's good to see some of our senior football players who, I've got a lot of admiration for their work ethic, be injured and work back from that, and be able to participate, and represent their families and themselves and their school. I'm really happy for them, and look forward to watching them this Friday. I mean, there is some pressure. The eighth-grade boys turned it up, for sure. I've followed that group of kids, because my daughters cheer with that group since third grade, and it's, it's literally gone from watching hurting cats running all over the field in all different directions, to young men hitting hard and playing hard, and you can really see them start to mature and become young men. And it's kind of neat at this age where they start to make that transition from being a kid to an adult, and you can see that in her effort. I also want to send a note of appreciation out here to our two curriculum directors. In April, I asked a question that I don't think had ever been asked before, and I think it kind of shocked a lot of people that I did. But I had asked to have access to the instructional material that I could review whenever I wanted to, just feeling that that was my responsibility, and they recently made that happen in a very user-friendly format. You could tell they put a ton of work into it, made it extremely user-friendly, easy to look through, easy to share, and easy to understand, and I just want to acknowledge your effort, thank them for their effort, because I do very much appreciate it. And I, lastly, I want to wish good luck to Coach Dur and her cross-country team. I know they train hard, and they've got a couple out-of-town trips coming, so I wanted to pass on some best wishes to them. How are you doing?
Short and sweet. Next week is Halloween, and I hope everybody has a safe and happy one, so be careful.
Do you have a question, Mr.?
I'm going to choose one.
Second. First by Mr. Daffler, second by Mrs. Gettler. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.